Okay, it is six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. A few housekeeping before I read the introductory statements. Brandy and I will co-chair this meeting. Chris Rembold will guide us through the agenda. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's June 16th, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board and Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation. Members of the public and our parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL 7C 38, Section 20F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by Burser Edge, Burser Eagle, by the town, and by CTSB. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. Listing of agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I have a couple of housekeeping items to start with. Nan just told me she's going to record, and that's fine. Anyone in the public may record. Do you want to start?
Did you want to do attendance, Steve?
Uh, yeah, we could do that first. Thank you, Brandy. Why don't you go ahead with the planning board?
Sure. Jonathan?
Here.
Pedro? Malcolm?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Here.
And Brandy, I'm here.
So Select Board, Garfield? Eric?
Here.
Ed?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
And I'm here, so both boards are here. Eric, your announcement?
Uh, yes, Steve. After talking with the State Ethics Committee multiple times over the last week or so, I have to recuse myself from this discussion again. I got a lot of emails after the last time, so I just kind of want to explain why I was advised to recuse myself. So with, I do own my primary residence. I also own two other houses in Housatonic where it's rental units. So when I brought this to the attention of the Ethics Committee, they advised me that, they said the only way I can participate in this conversation is if my interest is shared with 10% of the town's citizens. And since I do, it's, it's, it's two other houses with five apartments total, which are all long-term leases, but he just advised me that I had to recuse myself. So I did ask for a second opinion, and it basically came back as the same. So I am allowed to participate via citizen speak, but with my hat on as a Select Board member, I cannot, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
The other thing I was going to mention is that there's a link on the town website under the Select Board, Planning Board, Housing Subcommittee. There's a link to all the emails that we've received, and the meeting videos are posted on that same webpage. So if you want to see all the emails that we've received, they are there for any members of the public to look at. And having said that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and thanks to those of you in the audience. If I could presume, Steve, just to let folks know, there's 25 people in the audience who are not panelists, but thank you, Planning Board and Select Board, for being here. I think tonight, while the boards have discussed some draft bylaws that Lee has done a lot of work on, and the Housing Subcommittee has discussed, we thought it might be valuable tonight to take a little bit of a step back and think about short-term rentals on a broader level. So the agenda, I hope that we can talk about tonight, or includes discussing... You okay?
Yes.
Okay. Discussing the impacts generally of short-term rentals on the community. Discussing some of the objectives you might have for regulating short-term rentals. Discussing the strategies to do so, to regulate them, to enforce them, to compensate for community impacts. And to hopefully arrive at some consensus about how to move forward, whether it's the Planning Board, whether it's the Select Board, or both, towards those objectives. In the packet for tonight, we've put together a little bit more information to help you in that regard. It includes some basic data about what we know about the existing short-term rentals in our community. Includes a little bit of information about the regulations that we already have on file. So not only how the building code and fire code look at short-term rentals, but also what is and is not allowed as per the zoning bylaw. There's a list, a kind of table of maybe pros and cons you might want to think about, which will probably help you. I hope you flesh it out a little bit in your discussion, and I hope it sets some of the groundwork for moving forward as you think about some of the reasons to regulate short-term rentals or not. I believe the Housing Subcommittee looked at short-term rentals purely on a housing basis, and an affordable housing basis at that. And so it's probably prudent and wise to look at it as broadly as you can. And maybe there are different reasons to regulate it, housing being just one. So we'd like you to think about all of those. There's a quick review of the lodging tax revenue that the town has realized from short-term rentals, including hotels and motels over the years. You'll see in that chart in the packet that the short-term rental tax is included, but it comes in as just a lump sum even, so it's included with hotels and motels. But you'll see that the year that short-term rental tax started being collected, you'll see that those years bump up quite significantly in terms of tax revenue. And just following that chart, there's a quick reminder that it is possible for town meeting to vote to impose additional community impact fees on certain types of short-term rentals. We also thought it might be good background for you, rather than including the entire 2020 Housing Needs Report, which I know that the Housing Subcommittee is familiar with, just to at least include the implementation section. So a quick overview of the housing situation as we saw it in 2020 at least, and a quick snapshot of that local housing picture. And finally, at the end of the packet is the most recent updated draft bylaw for discussion from Lee, which I know she's worked on quite a bit, and she can speak to that when you're ready to do so. So Steve, Brandy, I'll turn it over to you, and hopefully we can discuss those impacts and some of the objectives that the board members may have.
Brandy, you want to go ahead? You want me to? You're muted, Brandy. Brandy?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, would you like to step through just real briefly for the benefit of the folks that are participating in this meeting, some of this specific information that's in our packet as far as housing availability and some of those statistics, so that everyone is level set on what information we're making decisions from?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
Someone has their hand up, and I'm going to assume this is just a process question. So let me, Gabriella, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to ask about, you know, as Eric just did, about Jonathan potentially recusing himself from this as well, since he, I believe, owns property.
That's Jonathan's choice, and that's nothing, Jonathan wants the answer that he had, but it's not. I'm not getting into that tonight. Jonathan, do you have anything you want to say?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so as stated in your packet, there is about 3,600 housing units in Great Barrington. I don't have the exact count from the 2020 census just yet. We know from the 2020 Housing Needs Study that there's essentially a 0% vacancy rate for rental units, whether it's low-income units, whether it's middle-income units, whether it's higher-income units, higher-priced units. The median gross rent, we know from the 2020 study, is about $900 per month. I suspect that's a little low. In any case, just comparing that to a short-term rental rate of $150 per night, you could realize that $900 in just six nights, if you were doing a short-term rental versus a long-term rental. So an interesting just comparison there. There was a question about how many second homes there were in Great Barrington, and how many might be listed as short-term rentals. There's about 415, according to the Assessors Office. That's 12% of the total housing units. There are 200 or so short-term rentals registered with the state on the Mass Department of Revenue. Approximately 56 of those are also on our second home list, so that's about 28% of the 200 registrations for short-term rentals. 28% of those short-term rentals are second homes. We know from some of the data that we've gathered from speaking with Granicus and other host compliance companies that about 90% of the 200 short-term rentals are entire homes. And that's some of the data that Lee and the Housing Committee have also discussed. You know, how many homes may be impacted by some of the draft bylaws that Lee and the Housing Committee have discussed. The existing regulations there, I thought were important, just so you could understand the playing field that you're operating in right now. In zoning now, as an accessory use, a resident homeowner can rent rooms to up to three borders, not three rooms, three borders, by right. So that's if you're a resident. You can do that now by right. There's no special permit, there's no site plan review. That's available now. Lodging houses, which is more than three rooms but less than 11 rooms, they're allowed only by special permit. This has been the case since at least 1960. So if you have one that predates that, you may be legally non-conforming. If you have one since then that doesn't have a special permit, then it's not conforming. Similarly, with hotels and motels, which is essentially 11 or more rooms. 11 to 45 rooms is the cap, 11 to 45 rooms, may be permitted by special permit in commercial and industrial zones only, but hotels are not permitted at all in residential zones in Great Barrington. This has been the case since at least 1960. So if you have one since 1960 in a residential zone, something that is not a by-right accessory use or a special permit lodging house, if you're a hotel, that would be, not be legally pre-existing non-conforming. The building codes may change soon, but currently, a building, if you were to be operating short-term rental out of a single-family home and not live there, the building code and fire code would treat you as a hotel. So there are some possible code issues there. I put that in there just for your information, because if we do discuss things like local enforcement, I'd like you to be aware and cognizant of the fact that inspecting 200 short-term rentals may have staff impacts. I'll stop there, I think, on page one. Hopefully, that's helpful so far. Okay. Page two of the packet, which maybe this will form the backbone of your conversation tonight, some of the possible benefits and drawbacks of short-term rentals. This includes some of the housing things that we've already discussed, and that the Subcommittee has discussed in more detail. And it includes many of the things that you've heard in emails and letters from citizens so far. So let you read that and respond to that and add your own things. I think this would be a good basis for discussion.
I think too, at the bottom of page two of the, or excuse me, page three, it's page three of the packet, but the possible purposes of a new regulation. I think if we can come out of today's meeting knowing, you know, what we want to regulate and what the purpose is, and be real clear about it, I think that is a really good goal for us to set for today.
I agree, Brandy.
Chris, may I, may I communicate out some of those suggested purposes?
Yes, feel free.
So, so Chris has done a little bit of, you know, thinking on this and gathered information from the Subcommittee, but also from his engagement, both with the Select Board and the Planning Board. So some, some of the potential purposes for new regulation would be to regulate whether residents or non-residents may operate short-term rentals.
And you have a model, sorry, Brandy, and that's the model that Lee has put forward to you.
To regulate the types of structures in which they may occur. To regulate where or when they may operate. So that would be, you know, what zoning district they might operate in. Or if there's a seasonal component, to set certain standards with which short-term rentals must comply. So some communities have required health inspections or life safety inspections to require licensing and registration in order to level the lodging playing field, and to collect impact fees to offset impacts on public services, and to potentially provide a source of revenue for affordable housing supply. So those are the ones that Chris had provided to us, just to get the juices flowing.
It might be helpful. Someone's just asked me, Chris, is it possible for you to share your screen and have these on the screen? It is on the, for those people in the audience, it is on the town website. If you go on the calendar and the packet is under today's date.
So while Chris is bringing that up, I'll just throw out for discussion, you know. So I think we need to start with, do we need a short-term rental bylaw of any sort, be it a zoning bylaw or some other bylaw? Just looking at the numbers that Chris has provided to us, the short-term rentals being roughly 200 out of 3,600 homes in the community, that's 5% of the housing stock. So I think, I think that's a threshold question we need to answer.
That's, yeah.
Please.
You have started, that's been my question from the beginning of this. Is the Subcommittee, you know, they skip step one, which is how big is the problem? And what are we trying to accomplish in, in right to, how do we limit short-term rentals? You know, I don't think they considered anything else. Other things we could do to help with the housing issue, but that aside, the goals that are stated are specific. How many units are we, let me back up a second. There will be pros and cons to this, right? Laws are messy. There will be negative impacts, which Chris has delineated. How many units, how many long-term units are we trying to get? One question. At what price range does that matter, is another question. And then what are the negative impacts? You know, we know there will be things like impacts to the landlords, impacts to the local economy, impacts to taxpayers. In order to decide if the benefits outweigh the detriments, we need to know those numbers. The last, from what Chris just said, we're looking at 56, possibly 56 units that are, will not be allowed to do short-term rental under this proposal. We don't know how many of those are owned by second homeowners who can afford to not rent them, and therefore, they still won't be available. Great Barrington resident, former Great Barrington residents who retired somewhere warmer, who are not going to sell their house or put it for a longer rental, because they need it when they come back. So we have no idea. I have no idea how many units we're looking to create from this, and what are the costs to do it? And I would love to have that before we go too much further, even tonight.
Yeah, with respect, I'm sorry, with respect, that's, that's one aspect, certainly, the affordable housing aspect. How many housing units could be, could be freed up and made possible for long-term rentals? That's one aspect, yes, which we should cover. There are other possible reasons to regulate, which we haven't discussed. And if you don't want this on screen, just let me know.
No, I, I think it's fine. Steve, did you want to add something? You kind of froze there for a minute. You look like you were about to say something.
No, there are a couple of people with their hands up, Brandy, so if you want to just, board members.
Sure, sure.
Recognize them as you go along.
Yeah, sure, okay. That means I need to be more observant as to whose hands are up. So it looked like Jeremy, you've got your hand up?
Uh, yes. Oh, sorry, I thought I was muted. Yeah, so I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I think, I think we should go forward with this. I mean, I, I don't know if Ed's, I think Ed's concerns are more down the line. My main concern is just how, housing that's leaving the stock. So housing that's available for owner-occupied primary residences and that sort of thing. And really, the speculation that, you know, not, my issue isn't what's going on now necessarily, but the potential to really drive the market up with speculation. And, you know, I mean, this has happened in other communities, and that would be my biggest concern. And then also, just in general, like, we can be more moderate with this, with what we propose to town meeting. And, you know, and then go from there. It's not like whatever we put forward is set in stone, it's going to be the bylaw forever. And, you know, what was proposed and what we talked about was, was a pretty big step. And, and I question whether or not, like Ed, with, you know, anything that we put forth, it's going to, like Ed said, it's going to have pluses and minuses. And, you know, yeah, and so. But I, but to, to your question, I, I mean, I think we should go to, I think we should go through the process of this.
Okay, all right. So Pedro's hand was up next, then Lee?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to what Ed said about the Housing Committee. I would think it's fair to say that the Housing Committee was split on whether or not a short-term rental regulation is a housing problem. I think that as we think about this piece of regulation and housing, we have to understand a little bit more about how the real estate market works, how our economy in general has been working here for the last 50 years, and how capital flows into our town. I think if you look at the stats just that Chris gave us, you know, we're, we're looking at a quarter of all short-term rentals that are not residents of this town, they're second homes. That, to me, doesn't scream out as a huge problem for, about second homeowners or about short-term rentals. Second homeowners, I mean, this town, I think, for those of you, I was not here after September 11th, but I do know a little bit about the history. And this town, I don't know, has ever seen a bigger capital infusion than after that event. And it was staggering. That is a direct sort of, it's correlated directly to the way that capital flows in our society today. There are more people with more money that are eventually, and that eventually park some of their money in real estate, because it's a safe investment that if they, if it's invested in communities that, that are safe and that grow, or in big cities, for example, it's an investment that they can sit on and they can make, you know, it's an investment, they'll make money on it in the future. The question on, of how many houses or, or units or whatever are coming off the market because of short-term rentals, I mean, there's just no, no way that we can relate any of that stuff to it. We have, you know, a certain number of second homeowners in town, and like I said, only a quarter of them are using their homes on a short-term basis. And I'm willing to, to, to say that some percentage of those people are also using their homes to vacation up here. So it's not a full-time, necessarily, a full-time short-term rental. I think too, from the housing study that we need to think about, is that our town, in terms of affordability, our town has showed some positive trends in the last 10 years. We have less people who are paying 30% of their income in rent, and 30% of homeownership, of homeowners who are paying less than 30% of their income towards their mortgages. So there is a slight improvement in the income capabilities of our residents. I think if we're going to talk about housing, we need to talk about housing. Short-term rentals are not, in my opinion, correlated in any way. These units that, that have been spoken about as be, as supposed, possibly coming on the market, there is no evidence I've seen anywhere that has instituted a short-term rental regulation that it produces or increases the availability of housing in the community. I think if we want to talk about housing, we need to talk about how do we make more housing? There's a housing shortage, and that is our biggest issue. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Lee?
Thank you. To answer Ed in terms of some of the points that he brought up, number one, the fact that we have a 0% rental vacancy rate, right there points to my belief that there is something that we need to do immediately to solve the housing crisis. And this is a multi-pronged effort. So this is the most immediate way that I can see that frees up a housing, and we have a supply issue. So if we look at the 56 units of housing that are currently owned by second homeowners that are short-term rentals, that is a substantial amount of housing. Now, we don't know what type of housing that will be. That could be market rate, that could be workforce, it could be affordable, but it's housing. And when we look at the 0% rental vacancy rate, that translates to, that translates to providing housing for residents that are suffering. So that's, that's the biggest stat that I'm looking at. And when we talk about other ways to combat the housing crisis, you talk about building more affordable housing, or building more housing in general. And with the cost of housing between at least $300,000 to $350,000 a unit to build, and the length of time it costs to bring that on stream, so let's say five years, 10 years, if you're talking about that many houses, that's, that's a substantial amount of time. And our residents can't wait. We have an immediate problem now. We can't talk about five years of time and where are we going to get $300,000 per unit to come up with housing? This is housing that's integrated in our neighborhoods that's, that has the ability to be, to be turned into housing for our, our long-time residents. So I think right there, we, we look at the, the ability for this bylaw to work immediately. The ability for this bylaw to work immediately and, uh, work in conjunction with other. Um, opportunities to create housing. But this is, um, not only, uh, a way to generate, uh, housing. But it also, uh, forms a deterrent because right now we have, um, unreg- unregulated commercial operations. Um, that are in our residential, uh, neighborhoods. And that is a problem. Um, so I I see this as a deterrent, so, um, our neighborhoods don't become, uh, big, um. Areas of commercial operations that are are unregulated and it will, um, contribute to solving this, uh, housing supply shortage. Which is is, um, pretty significant right here if if people listen to some of the stories that, um, at least I've heard. So, uh, just talking to the stats is the, you know, the zero percent rental vacancy rate and the the ability that. We have fifty-six units that have been taken away from, um, from possibility as, um, permanent. Long-term housing.
Lee, if I could just ask a follow-up question to what you said about the, um, the number of units that might be immediately available. I mean, can we really be assured that they would become available? I think that is one of the difficult questions here is. What if, what degree of effectiveness would this potentially have? And and do you, have you any insights into that? Or have you thought that through or talked it through with folks that do own? Properties that they operate as short-term rentals and you get a sense that they would convert them to long-term?
So, so one of the issues is, we we don't know, they'll they'll, they have choices. They could sit on them and not make any money. Um, they could convert them to long-term rentals or they could sell them. So two out of those three options will add to the supply. And we have a housing crisis, we have a lack of supply. So, um, people that can afford to have second homes right now and not, uh, rent them out as short-term rentals. Most of the people are doing so, um, right now. They're not renting them out. So what I see is a lot of, um. Or many, I shouldn't say a lot because I don't know, but many people that, um, are using this commercially, uh, solely to 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 earn money. And, um, that if they, uh, you know, come up with something that deters them from from making money. They're gonna have to, uh, make a decision whether they want to, um, you know, continue to make money, but through long-term, uh, rentals. Or or sell it. And, um, the fact is that they have options. And what I, what I'm focusing on is on the people that don't have options, that don't have housing, that work in our community. Um, that can't afford to live here, that are forced to to move away. And once they move away, we we lose them. Oftentimes, we we lose them. They they take their families, they take their kids out of the school and they work elsewhere. They're not gonna drive an hour, an hour and a half. To work in a a minimum wage job in Great Barrington. So I'm looking at the the long-term view. I'm not looking at the people that have these options, that have second homes and investment properties. I'm looking at the crisis that we have right now in Great Barrington, um, among our residents.
I don't think anyone would disagree that there's a housing shortage. Um, so let's just con- continue around with the board members. And see who else wanted to add to this. I see Malcolm, you've got your hand up.
I I think, uh, the, uh, idea of converting short-term rentals to affordable housing is a red herring. As far as the argument goes. I mean, I agree with Lee. I mean, it's really a longer view. Uh, you know, in one of the letters that were sent to us, somebody made the statement, uh, that Airbnb has nothing to do. With the housing shortage. That's a direct quote. Uh, it it's just not true. I mean, we we have a supply and demand, uh, that determines, uh, pricing. And we have a fixed supply and any increase in demand is gonna increase in prices, all up and down the the line in the entire market. And it's a fallacy to think that, uh, only expensive, uh, houses are being offered by second homeowners for Airbnb. In my neighborhood, a small, under two thousand square foot, uh, I think it was more like sixteen hundred square foot. Uh, three-bedroom house recently sold for nearly three hundred thousand dollars and was immediately converted to short-term rental. Um, and, uh, it's off the market. It's, it's, it was, it could have been and it should have been affordable housing. But it's off the market. Um, short-term rental increases demand for housing. To to the benefit of those who already have housing over those who do not. And I think, uh, I I I don't think we should be draconian, say, we shouldn't have any short-term rentals. But I do think we have to look at it and say, uh, how can we, um, how can we benefit the residents of our town? While not, uh, or while, you know, uh, uh. Making it difficult for outsiders to use our town for an investment. Based on the, uh, the the attractions of the town without them actually making a personal investment in it. That's what I had to say.
Thank you, Malcolm. Jonathan, what did you want to add?
Yeah, um, well, a few things. Uh, first of all. Uh, the notion that the short-term rentals are going to become affordable housing in any way is. Is probably a fallacy. In the last year, as of this, as of today, there were, uh, a hundred and seventeen sales. Of residences in Great Barrington. Uh, only eighteen out of that hundred and seventeen were three hundred and twenty-five thousand or less. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand is kind of the upper end of what workforce housing might be. And the median sale price of a residence in Great Barrington in the last calendar year. Was five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So to think that these houses, uh, are going to somehow increase the stock. That's available to workforce, that's not gonna happen. I think that. I think that if we force them to rent them. Uh, first of all, you have to realize that all of these short-term rentals are furnished. And so no one rents a furnished house. If you rent a furnished house, it's typically for a month or two. And you're, you've come in from California to work at Ja- Jane Iredale for a month, whatever, whatever it is. Um, but it's not the, it's not the local workforce that is looking for furnished houses. And if you furnish a house, you're gonna charge more for it than if it's unfurnished. And so. You know, people, regardless of who owns it, they could be looking for a return on their investment. It seems to me that we are. The approach that we've taken so far in this discussion, I think is not required. Uh, the building code, and I had a discussion with Ed May about this this afternoon. Uh, in an attempt to try to figure out, how do we level the playing field between motels and hotels? And second home people, uh, or not second home, but Airbnb. And the building code is very clear that if you ha- have a primary resident. It's, it could be a tenant, it doesn't have to be an owner, but if you have a year-round resident. Then you can rent short-term and the building code still thinks of it as a single-family home. If it is not tenant or owner occupied, then anything. Less than thirty days is short-term rental and it is under the building code, it's a hotel. And hotels need to be sprinkled. So if we make everyone register, who wants to do short-term residence. If we get them to register, if we get the them to have the property inspected, uh, when they become registered. And they respect, they're inspected for, you know, uh. You know, smoke and.
Yep.
Yeah, life safety issues. Um, then what happens is that. Anyone who's not living here or having a full-time tenant, who wants to do short-term rentals. Uh, has become a hotel. And they have to sprinkle their building. So that's a huge expense and that is gonna prohibit virtually all of these short-term rentals. By people who are not occupying premises. And so to me, that's a much less divisive approach. Than saying, you know, than what we've done so far.
So, Chris, you had mentioned that you think the code is changing. Do do you have any comment on what, um, Jonathan just mentioned about the way the building code? May define single-family home different from a property being used as a short-term rental that might other be, otherwise be considered a single-family home?
No, uh, first of all, I think everything Jonathan said is accurate. Currently, um. Ed has, the building inspector has discussed with us how the code might change. Code changes usually take a long time, so I'm not gonna comment on that. Um. I I believe, uh, if I just say one more thing. One, um, the benefit of approach like Lee has, uh, put forward is that it does not require staff inspections. Uh, one drawback possibly of Jonathan's approach is that it would require registration, local registration, staff inspection, so. That's a point for discussion.
Yep, definitely. Um, I, Lee, I see your hands up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, a couple of things with Jonathan's, um, mention of the median sales price of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, so a couple of things about that, uh, you know, I I, that seems to imply that people that currently live in Great Barrington. Can't afford these types of homes. And what what we're talking about is that there's a supply issue period. So I'm not just talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about housing across the board, the families that actually want to live here. And invest here and send their school, uh, kids to school here. They can't, there's just no housing available. So, um, we're not just talking about affordable housing, we're talking about creating housing for people that want to invest in this community. That wanna be part of this community. They don't wanna be, uh, tourists, they wanna live here and they wanna contribute. So that's the big, um, big point that I wanna make is that we're trying to create housing for people that want to live here. And and invest here. Um, what I have seen and what some of the stories that we have seen or heard from, um. Some of the comments that have been made are issues when houses, uh, that have been multifamily houses. Have been bought up by investors and turned into single-family homes or turned into short-term rentals. Now, this is a a serious issue. Um, so that it is taking, uh, affordable, uh, housing off the market. And it's converting it to short-term rentals and and, um, you know, impacting those that would normally have rented, um, long-term. Um, have have basically stopped them from being able to do so. And, um, you know, we're not. Uh, a- as Chris mentioned, this, uh, route of of, uh, having a primary residence restriction. Um, what this does is is it takes, um, it it doesn't need as many resources as, um, Jonathan's approach. In terms of registering and requiring sprinklers and so forth. So, um, this is a very streamlined approach. And it's something that's that's happening all over, um, America and in Europe. So it it, I'm not, uh, reinventing the wheel. We have, uh, various, um, examples of other municipalities that have, um, gone down the route of primary residence restriction. Um, uh, such as Somerville, Massachusetts, Cambridge, Massachusetts, Boston, Los Angeles, uh. Washington DC, Denver, Killington, Vermont, Woodstock, Vermont, New Orleans, and and the the list goes on and on and on. So this is not something that I've pulled out of the hat. Um, and I've done a lot of research and and tried to balance the, um. The limited resources that we have on staff to, uh, to deal with registration. And I I have, um, found, um, a monitoring software that we can afford. Um, so I think this is a good balance. So when you do look at the primary residence and restriction. Um, the twenty-eight percent is not going to shift the world in terms of stopping tourists from visiting Great Barrington. Um, if if residents or if tourists, um, can't find their first option. And again, it's only twenty-eight percent that we're we're talking about limiting short-term rentals. They still have plenty of options in Great Barrington. Um, then they might, uh, do an Airbnb in Monterey or Sheffield, but they're not necessarily gonna stay and shop in Sheffield or Monterey. Uh, because they don't have an Airbnb. So, um, some of the, the, uh, the research that I I've shown. Is that the argument that, uh, Airbnb particularly makes in saying that, um, a reduction of short-term rental opera. Um, options would affect, um, the economic development of of a town. And, um, according to studies that I've, uh, read, um. Number one being from an Economic Policy Institute study for, in March, uh, twenty-sixth of two thousand and eighteen. Um, it says that the potential benefit of increased tourism supporting city economies is much smaller than advertised. And it goes on to say that there's little evidence that, uh, cities with increasing su- supply of short-term. Uh, Airbnb rental accommodations are seeing a large increase in travelers. Um, instead, accommodations supplied via short-term rentals seem to be nearly a pure substitution for other forms of accommodation. And one of their studies say that, um, indicate that new, that only two to four percent of those using Airbnb. Say that they would not have taken the trip where Airbnb rentals were unavailable. So, um. And and what this goes on to say is that they they say that Airbnb is is, uh, claiming that, um. Is basically overstating the effect of the economic affi- uh, activity and relating to Airbnb. So my point is that, uh, when we talk about the economic impact, if we were to restrict it to primary residences. I don't, I don't feel that it's gonna be that substantial. I think that it will either go to our local businesses. Our local lodging establishments, or people will will, uh, go elsewhere, but they'll still come to Great Barrington. Um, but the the benefits, um, are such that we'll actually have staff, um, in our, in our local establishment. So there won't be staffing issues and there'll be more people to to serve these tourists that that do come to Great Barrington. So I really see this as a a balancing and, um, not an elimination of option, of the option of short-term housing. But it's basically laying out a standard regulations and and limits, um, the commercial operations of, uh, short-term rentals in Great Barrington. Um, and in residential neighborhoods. So, um, I really see this as as restoring a balance in our community. And it's about supporting a vibrant and inclusive community that welcomes tourists and supports the workers. And the local businesses that serve them. So, um, a few people have mentioned that, uh, you know, they feel that. Investors and visitors, um, are being portrayed as as it's greedy. And I've never said that. Um, I'm just trying to find a way to restore the balance in our community. And, um, I've also done a lot of work in terms of looking at our master plan. Our master plan and linking it to, um, some of the long-term goals and visions that are in our master plan. And, um, really looking at what's the core vision, what's what's the vision that we want for, um, our community. And that includes, um, supporting our our workers and our residents. So, um, I'll leave it at that.
Sure, thanks. And I see that Steve, Ed and Garfield all have their hands up. I I think though, I. I'd like to encourage this group to maybe start taking a little bit of a different tact here. Um, we, we two oh one. I am sure, I am not speaking out of turn, to say we all, um, recognize the severity of the housing issue. In our community and the fact that we need more housing, more inclusive housing. Um, the Planning Board has been working on that for years. Um, there've been a number of projects that have been built over the last few years. To increase housing supply in the community. It's certainly not enough. Um, we need more types of housing. Um, and there are, um, actions that have been supported at town meeting, you know, that the Planning Board with the Select Board's. Um, input has put in place around, um, giving the ability for some of these previously non-conforming multifamily units. Um, maybe old Victorians that were multiple units to get special permits and continue to be multifamily units. Rather than be converted to single-family homes. Um, we've, we've passed a town meeting, um, accessory dwelling unit. So there's, there's a lot that we've been trying to do related to housing. But with this focus being on the short-term rentals. And recognizing that we do have housing challenges. what I'd like to know from this group though is, do we feel like we are hearing from the community that there are other impacts from short-term rentals? Other communities I work with, there are issues related to nuisance. You know, parties late at night, noise, garbage, um you know, feelings of safety and security in our neighborhoods. I I haven't been hearing any of that. So I I, you know, I'd like to hear from Steve and Ed and Garfield and then if we can maybe start thinking about what else is really driving the short-term rental outside of affordable housing, or is it really truly just an affordable housing issue? So Steve, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, so Brandy, I'm glad you said what you said because it it's a segue to what I was gonna say. If the only reason we're doing a short-term rental bylaw is for housing, is for affordable housing or workforce housing, it may not be convincing enough because it may not sway uh enough houses to really make a difference. But there are other reasons that we need to look at. A whole change in the character of neighborhoods. When all of a sudden your neighborhood has two or three commercial establishments, and that's what short-term rentals can be next door to you. You don't know your neighbor. Uh there's different people every weekend, there's noise, there's garbage, there's there's other problems. Um that in addition to wanting to have try to sway some people to have more affordable housing, that's really important. I think right now we're looking at it with tunnel vision. We've got kinda stuck on the housing market and cha- and trying to reduce the number of short-term rentals and think that that's gonna magically create a lot of either workforce or affordable housing. May create some, but maybe not enough to sway us to do this bylaw. So I think we all have to decide whether we wanna do a short-term rental bylaw. And there's gotta be more reasons than just this. It's, I think that's one reason, the affordable housing, but there's that that's only one. The other thing we have to look at as a group is, I realize registration was turned down a few years ago. But whatever business you run in the town of Great Barrington that I'm aware of, you need to register. So I I'm I'm not saying I'm totally in favor of registration, but I don't know why we've have shut the door completely on it. And yes, if you register, it will be much more um work on the building uh department. But that's part of the downside of it. But it also will give us a firm list of who is um running a business, a short-term rental, and will also tell us whether they're up to code. Which I thought that's what we're supposed to be doing anyways for safety sake. So I I'm I'm not convinced that registration should be completely off the table. I'll leave it to Garfield.
Garfield?
Yes, hi, uh thank you. Um I agree with uh pretty much what is Lee's uh objectives are and what we're trying to do. What I wanted to say, and I may be oversimplifying, correct me if I am, but what I'm noticing and have seen and you probably have seen, uh that the people that are against a short-term rental all own short-term rental houses and they have multiple homes. The people that are a- against it or or for for this um don't have these options. They don't have it. I don't think um they shouldn't be looked at as a last objective, but I think this is part of what we need to protect are the people that have lived here the longest. I know it's not popular, but at the same time, uh there's been some talks and uh Brandy's even said it herself that there's the American Recovery Act out there. There's money out there. It suggested that a million dollars go to the Affordable Housing Committee. I know we're not speaking just affordable housing, but this, we ourselves, we could probably with a million dollars afford to at least buy two homes and renovate, and these are what people are doing now. They're buying up these homes and they're saying, oh, we're renovating, we're making them beautiful now so people can live out, live in them. If we are granted some monies, we could do the same thing. We could buy these homes, even if it's just two. And let's say there's six, eight people. You're helping six, eight people. We have to look at it as people. Uh the people are people. We just can't look at it as housing and, oh my god, the numbers and we're not helping. Eight hundred people, we're only helping a half a dozen. They're people and they have to be considered. And I think that's part of a of our of our goal should be is looking at the long-time residents. I don't have the complete answer, I'll be honest with you, but I know there is money there that should be had.
Thanks, Garfield. Ed?
Yeah, I've got a bunch to say, so I'll say it quickly. One, um you will hear at Citizen Speak, I'm sure, because we've heard it at our last meeting and at the sub, at the committee meeting, the subcommittee meetings. It is not just people who are doing long-term, short-term rentals who are speaking out against uh this limit. We've had several speakers who began their speaking by saying, um I've renovated houses, I put them up for year-round rentals, I don't do this, but still I disagree, so that's just not true. Um a quick one thing I wanna say is a bunch of, among the letters that we have gotten, um and just a minute ago with an earlier, so somebody speaking earlier, is conflating second homeowners and short-term rentals. So two of the homes that have, we've read about that were purchased and the tenants were kicked out are not short-term rentals, they're second homes, which I don't think we can stop. I don't think we can ban people. I would love to live in a world where nobody bought two homes until everyone had one. We don't live in that world. We can't do that. Um but none of that's what I wanted to say. I I I'm, we have stated and restated and restated the problem and nobody here disagrees with the problem. We have a housing crisis at all levels. There isn't enough housing. So I I I it's frustrating to hear when I ask a question to get the problem repeated rather than the answer. Um I'm looking for numbers. How many units do we think this will create? Is it one? Is one enough? Of those fifty-six units, we don't know how many of them are retirees who are not gonna sell it because they wanna come back and visit their children and grandchildren. Um we don't know how many are second homeowners who can afford to not rent it out, even if they are now. Do we want all of our second homeowners in this town to be wealthy? Is that the goal of this? Because this could help with that. So I I what is the number we're looking for? How how do we decide? Is this worth it? Because there are definite costs to it. Uh that's all I'm asking. Is it six? Is it ten? What is the number? And then, how do we know that number is accurate? What is that based on? What, uh how many second homeowners who are doing Airbnb have we talked to who said, yeah, I would sell it and I would sell it at a price that's reasonable and I would sell it to somebody who's local, as opposed to another second homeowner? Um and then to uh s- answer uh what Brandy's saying, I absolutely think there are other reasons to take this up. I think there's an awful lot in this proposal that's great that we should definitely have that puts different kinds of limits on. Um I just don't think we should be looking at this as going to add housing unless we have some idea what that will be. And as others who know more about this than I do have said, it just doesn't look likely. Thank you.
Yeah, and Ed, I I'd like to put the housing issue kind of in a parking lot because I think to your your point about how many, that's a valid question. Um we we would like to know, you know, how much energy are we gonna expend putting a bylaw in place? Um what is the impact of that? And then what is the result in achieving this one stated purpose of trying to create additional housing opportunity? And and so we've now gone completely round the table at least once with everybody and we all agree there's the housing problem. So let's maybe put that in a parking lot over here. And let's talk about other reasons why it might be relevant, other things that can support a purpose if we intend to regulate short-term rentals. And and so Chris has put some of those up on the screen here as far as as pros and cons. Um I I have over the last, since we met last time, last two weeks, been trying to just talk to anybody, anybody I know who has a short-term rental, who has a long-term rental, who's a single-family homeowner, who is a renter, trying to find out what these impacts could potentially be. I think Chris's list is fairly comprehensive. I don't have a sense of the magnitude though. And so I think it would be helpful for us to understand, are we really solving a problem beyond affordable housing? Because I think it needs to be a solution that is multifaceted, as Lee had said previously. Um, Lee, you wanted to make a point there?
Yeah, uh I I I wanted to to thank Steve for actually bringing up one of the main purposes of the um what I saw as this this particular draft of the bylaw. And it was to really address the um the the community cohesion in neighborhoods and to reduce the adverse effects of short-term rentals on traffic, noise, um and and just the overall um effect of of um of short-term rentals on neighborhoods. So I I I heard someone um speak to this as a revolving door of strangers, someone said to me the other day. And you know, when a a house goes up for sale next to you and a for-sale sign goes up, uh you know, a lot of times you bristle. You say, you know, oh my gosh, what's what's gonna happen to that house? Is it gonna become a short-term rental? Am I gonna have this revolving door of strangers coming in? Um you know, weekly a- and not know who who my neighbors are anymore. And and this is, you know, one of the very, very important uh purposes of this short-term rental is is to try to um reduce these adverse effects. And you know, we've seen um some of the short-term rental problems that we we've had, you know, with events and gatherings and parties. And and once people um address short-term rentals as a way just to have a commercial operation and to make money, that's when you, when you start risking um, you know, the the co- the the community cohesion we have um existing in our neighborhood. So that's that's a really, really big point. And and I heard, heard from many people that are um solely worried about that. They they, you know, they wanna be able to to know who their neighbors are. And the one of the the reasons with this primary residence restriction is that, you know, if it's your own residence, you you're gonna be more accountable. Um so you know, you might not be there, but you you still have your neighbors um to answer to uh when you come back. And um this addresses that. So I just wanted to to make that point. And thanks, Steve, for for bringing up that very, very important point about this.
Yeah, and I just, I don't wanna let the um special events um issues that we've been having in town over the last year or year and a half go by. I mean, Planning Board has already talked about whether or not we need to have some sort of special events regulation. I think what we've learned in talking with Chris and with the building department is that it's very clearly a commercial operation and um and so what we've seen are cease and desist orders which um terminate those continued uses. Um and I and I think that's a separate and distinct issue from a short-term rental. When you're operating your house as an events venue for a wedding or a corporate retreat, that is very clearly commercial. I think that's very, very different from a short-term rental um where you've got, you know, couples or groups of young people or families coming in uh for a finite period of time. Um so but to the point of what other impacts may there be, community character is one. Um, has anybody else got any input on other impacts? Uh Jeremy, I see your hand up.
Well, I just wanted to echo something that we said, and it often gets confused with other kinds of changes in the community. So if we're really trying to, I I know this isn't about, I I mean, I don't see this as about increasing the stock of affordable housing or workforce housing. But it is one thing that comes up in communities, or at least um within the micro-community, when um some kind of um denser housing comes up, is the that sort of impact on the community. And I the point that we made about the revolving door of strangers, you know, eh I mean, it's something it's something that we should remember and that when you have, you know, workforce or affordable housing, those, you know, initially they're strangers. Um but over time, they're not strangers, they're just your neighbors. Um but I I I I worry about really focusing on um on not changing communities. Because if we're really, in a separate conversation, if we're really gonna talk about how do we increase affordable and workforce housing, it's gonna involve community changes. And so if we really sell this as that, you know, it 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 furthers the belief that we can just not change anything about this town. And I mean, I've always seen that, you know, that um that kind of stagnation eventually leads to the decline of the town. And so anyway, I I wanted to echo that point that we made.
In terms of this and that, you mean, short-term rentals versus change that's gonna happen in your community as new people come in and establish themselves?
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, well, or if, in a separate conversation, if we're gonna talk about affordable and and workforce housing, those are new people coming into the community and really to differentiate that from, you know, this kind of revolving door of strangers, which happens in hotels um and B and Bs, but you know, i- i- it is a bit different. Um uh so B and Bs can operate, you know, all over the town and, but there is some sort of person there. Um, you know, to help manage that. There's some um person, some sort of resident there. Um uh and then, you know, hotels are, you know, like was said earlier, are just industrial commercial zones. And so yeah, but that point, differentiating the two. Uh short-term housing versus long-term housing that might be different than, you know, single-family homes that we see now.
Okay, um, Ed, I think your hand went up first.
Yeah, if we're try, if we don't want a revolving door of strangers, which apparently a little offensive because strangers aren't all evil people and as we all know from our stranger danger class, as when we were children, sometimes evil people are our relatives. But so aside from that, which I think is a s- um, if we don't want strangers in our neighborhoods, why are we allowing it at all? Why are we allowing residents to rent out rooms? Um, you know, again, I don't agree with that as a goal, but if that is a goal, it's it's uh really what we're saying is some people are worthy and others are not. Um and the whole idea that second homeowners don't contribute to our community, aside from financially, they, you know, they they donate to nonprofits, they volunteer in our community, they're in our community, they shop in our stores. Um a- as do tourists. I I I I'm not sure why we're drawing the line between uh permanent resi- permanent residents and uh part-time residents when we're allowing this, if that's the problem.
Yeah, I I don't think that that's the problem, but I suspect Jeremy wants to respond, Lee, if you don't mind me just um going to him and then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I mean, Ed, I'm I'm not, I'm not making that point. I mean, my bigger point was that this is, that we encounter this problem all the time um with any sort of affordable or denser housing that comes up. You know, the community that it's going in is worried about how it's gonna change their community and how these people are coming into their community. And I and I agree with you. I I mean, and I and I do have a big problem with us just sweeping through and changing things. You know, that a lot of people, well, the, I I suspect that these, the the commercial, the straight commercial ventures were these um, you know, that, you know, they they had a plan, you know, they invested a lot of money in our community. And yes, they are bringing people, besides the money, they are bringing people into the community, you know, and, you know, and I you know, and and a board member had told me that like, this is how they came to our community. You know, that they first visited our community, you know, through short-term housing and then decided to live here. So I mean, I think I I'm definitely not trying to say that. Um
I guess not.
Uh at my my point is, is that, my point, my larger point was, is that I I I feel very uncomfortable with promoting this idea of things can't change.
Understood, thank you. Okay, Lee?
Um Jeremy, could you just explain? I I guess I don't really understand when you say you feel com- uncomfortable with uh things don't change. I just, could you explain that? That that wasn't my question, but just, I'm just confused by what you just said.
I mean, uh you know, I mean, we see it all the time. Uh we don't want things to change, you know. Abstractly, we'll vote for things, but when we experience change, you know, locally, like on our street or on our block or whatever, you know, then it becomes more uncomfortable. Um I mean, in Great Barrington in general, we're 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 s- we're slow to change. Um, we don't want things to really change. We, I mean, you know, we talk about things in the past and we liked it that way and, you know, or we like the way things are. And I mean, it's difficult. Um yeah, so, I mean, I don't know.
Lee, did you have something more? Because I feel like we're we're philosophically going around.
Yeah, no, I just had one, one really quick thing. Um so one of the, another goals of this was um short-term rentals artificially inflate rental costs and the cost of homes. So I think by regulating short-term rentals in such a way that, you know, w- will um address this. Because, you know, once you have um, you know, short-term rentals in your neighborhoods, um rental costs go sky-high and that's what happens is that local residents are being priced out of the market and the price of homes are are going sky-high. So this is one way to address that.
I think though that that goes both ways, Lee, because there is a certain amount of investment that gets made in properties sometimes that are under invested in. Um, and that can then set off a chain reaction that can have a an impact, like, but you know, my neighbor painted their house. So yeah, I should paint my house too. And so you can have this positive chain reactions. I I think we have to, again, going back to your comment on balance, we need to sort of consider the balance. So, um.
Yep. Answer that. Um, so permanent, you know, people that buy homes here, that actually wanna live here full time, they invest in their homes too. And, you know, I keep hearing that only the short term uh rental operators are the ones that invest in homes. Where, you know, many people that would normally buy these houses um would would invest in in them as well. So I I don't, um, you know, that argument doesn't really carry weight, because I I think that that's missing out the fact that people that actually wanna buy these homes um will invest in them, you know, whether or not they're gonna be permanent rental, you know, renters or uh long term resin- residents. Um, so I think that's very, very important to stress.
My point is more that when you see improvement in your neighbor's house, whether, like, my neighbor painted their house, it prompted my husband and I to say, you know what, we really should repaint a part of our house too. It was looking a little weather beaten. So I think, you know, it's that, that sort of iron sharpens iron. Or, you know, when your neighbor mows their lawn, you feel prompted to mow your own lawn sometimes. So I I think investment of any sort in our neighborhoods is a positive thing. We want to see our housing stock be maintained and invested in. Um, but I I don't wanna get sidetracked on that. I do want us to really get to a point where we can make a decision about whether or not we want to make um, uh, we want to regulate short term rentals. And I'm not hearing from this group at this point in time really strongly, one way or another. I hear a couple of you want to regulate short term rentals, what form that will take. I think Lee's done a great job in putting um some sample language together. But I I just, you know, I I feel like asking like yes or no questions right now, like, you know, do you?
I think you're right. It's absolutely important that we come out of this meeting deciding if this group wants to regulate short term rentals. That we we need to get some direction and we we don't have it after two meetings. So I I absolutely agree with you. We have to figure out a way to do that. We're not gonna solve all the problems tonight. But we have to at least figure out if this group is going to do it or not. And then the select board or the planning board will have to decide if they are interested in doing it, if the whole group isn't.
So you you want to regulate short term rentals?
Oh, no, no. No, no, I mean, what what I wanna do is is put this for a vote to uh to to town meeting. I mean, you know, it it's, you know, we have what, eight people or ten people? I don't know. Um, I can't count. But, you know, we have a group of people, but we have, you know, residents that um really deserve to make the decision. So I I, you know, I I I feel that we owe it to at least the residents to to put for something that they can vote upon or amend or throw out um the door. So I, you know, I I feel uncomfortable making this decision and being a gatekeeper and saying, well, we're not even gonna um even address this issue. Because I feel like this, the fact that we're looking at this housing need study that has zero percent rental vacancy rate screams the fact there's the housing crisis. And if we don't immediately address this, at least give an option for townspeople to vote on it, we're not doing, we're we're doing a disservice to residents.
Yeah.
As part of the process, I I al- I absolutely agree with you that to bring it to town meeting is important. But I think we have to bring something that's more fleshed out right now as far as by the whole group. You know, what are our goals? What are our objectives? How are we solving the problem? A- and we we have to have some sort of an agreement on that. And I don't think we're we're near to to doing that.
So, you know, just taking notes through this discussion, um, the issues that have been mentioned are um issues not only of affordable housing, I think that goes without saying now. Um, but issues of community character, um, y- you know, the and impact on property values. Those are sort of the two big ones that I had noted um writing down. I I have not, um, and I have sought from hoteliers um information as to whether or not they feel like short term rentals are impacting um lodging taxes at all. I think Chris had put some material in our packet on that. And I wouldn't say it's clear from that financial, or maybe Mark, that was you. Um, can you speak at all, Mark, to the financial impact of short term rentals? And whether or not we can, from the data you provided, get any distinction as to?
Yeah, that was, that was me, Mark.
That was Chris. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, shh, the, in twenty nineteen, the state law that became effective in January twenty nineteen uh instituted the lodging tax on short term rentals as well. So we began to see that come in in um fiscal year twenty, so beginning July first twenty nineteen. So six months after it became effective in state, it started with a new fiscal year. So you'll see in fiscal twenty, uh compared to fiscal twenty nineteen, there was a jump of thirty thousand dollars in revenue. Presumably that is because short term rentals were uh starting to pay the six percent lodging tax. A bigger jump in second quarter FY twenty compared to nineteen. Uh, and third quarter FY twenty compared to nineteen. Um, fourth quarter FY twenty down a little bit. Um, it's hard to tell, tho- those uh gross revenues from lodging taxes come into the town. They're not uh segregated into hotels versus short term rentals. So we don't know what comes from where. Obviously FY twenty one is impacted by the pandemic, so you can see how things went down um overall. But, you know, safe to say it's been increasing the town's revenue. It's hard to say how much. And it's hard to say if short term rentals are taking away from established hotels and motels or B and Bs without actually talking to them. Can't tell that from these numbers.
Okay, and then there's a taxing mechanism that the town has not taken advantage of to date. Is that correct?
Correct. That same twenty nineteen law also not only did it extend the six percent rooms tax to short term rentals, it also allows towns to regulate short term rentals. But it also allows towns to impose an additional three percent community impact fee on certain types of short term rentals. Um, specifically, those, I think the law calls them professionally managed. But essentially, it means that if you have two short term rentals in a town, one of those gets taxed an extra three percent. Uh, if you have three in town and you only live in one, then those other two get taxed that extra three percent. That's the community impact fee. It's hard to know how much that would raise, but it would raise some additional funds in G. That's a town meeting vote. And it could be separate from uh any form of regulation, whether it's zoning or other regulation that you might uh wanna pursue. An impact fee could be separate from that. It can take its own, it can take its own path.
That'd be something the select board would potentially take up.
Yeah, we're we're gonna put that on an agenda to start talking about it.
Okay. All right, so we don't have to dig into that now. Lee, is your hand up?
Yeah, I I just wanted to, when we're still going back to the purposes and what we're trying to achieve, I was hoping to to direct you to the um the version two of this uh draft. Um, which had been rewritten since the last um version. And I'll just read the 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 three sentences. Um, and I just wanna get a sense of of this, if this is close to some of the goals that we're speaking about. Um, so this is under uh the version two from uh November twenty fourth, the draft. And it says, under purpose, this regulation is designed to allow for the operation of such rentals for Great Barrington residents. Ensure the primary use of re- such rentals remain residential. Reduce commercial operations in residential neighborhoods. Prevent long term rental units from being replaced with short term rentals and protect affordable housing units from conversion. And reduce the adverse effects of short term rentals on traffic, noise and community cohesion in neighborhoods. So those were the um the updated per- purposes. So I just wanted to to bring that into the record.
Yeah, no, I I think that that those are um in terms of purposes, that those are good purposes. Um, I think what, kinda where the rubber hits the road is, you know, to then dig into the bylaw and see if those purposes are met through the text of the bylaw. And that, you know, that's a pretty involved process. Um, but I still think um that sort of backing up and talking about process, big picture. You know, wanting to get something to town meeting, e- even in the planning board's process, were this to become a zoning bylaw? Um, you know, we would start with a draft such as what's in front of us now. And we would start kinda hammering through the functionality of it and tinkering with it to see, you know, test cases to see if it proves itself out as as um enforceable and functional. Um, because it's it's amazing what we write down and then it like just, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't achieve what we want it to achieve. And I think Jeremy pointed out that, you know, it's a dynamic process, so we can always amend it. But we wanna, you know, get into that process. But then we go to the select board and to the public with that draft bylaw. And there are times where the feedback we get at that point in process is where we might pull um a bylaw. There are many instances where we have not advanced bylaws to town meeting based on the feedback we've gotten um in the public hearing process for for the zoning bylaw. So I think, you know, we'll probably get a flavor for that tonight, um, when we have citizens speak. And that'll be really um important. And we've certainly got a lot of comments. Um, and so I don't have any issue with the purpose here. I just, I'm still not a hundred percent sure that, like, straw poll with this group, do we wanna move forward with regulating short term rentals for the purposes stated both in the bylaw? And also from what we've discussed so far, as far as community character, fiscal impacts, property values. Um, you know, so again, I'd really love to get a straw poll from everyone on that.
I just had a question for Chris, I guess. Um, uh, in terms of zoning ordinances or general, can this be a general ordinance or is it a zoning as it's read or how is that determined?
Well, ultimately, we work with town council to determine uh where it's most appropriate and then follow that process. Uh, at the end of the day, if we've done it wrong, the attorney general will let us know, in which case it's a wasted process. So we try to do that upfront. Um, as written, it may be a zoning uh bylaw, your your version two. Um, this has not been, this particular version has not been sent to council, so I I can't answer that for sure. A simple registration law, um, everybody must register, everybody must play by these rules. Uh, would be a general bylaw. Everybody's, everybody must pay a tax, everybody must must be inspected. That's probably a general bylaw. Um, I think this might be a zoning bylaw as written here, but i- in any case, whatever form it takes. Um, I agree with Brandy, some resolution coming out of tonight. If, you know, everybody could say, yes, we should regulate it and the primary reason is this, secondary reason is this.
So Brandy, may I suggest there are two members with their hands up? Let's recognize them and let let's figure out a way to get your straw pulled.
Okay, I know, I'm just gonna start calling people's names. Um, I don't know who raised their hand first. Was it Ed?
Uh, do you know, Malcolm?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I was actually gonna suggest what you've been suggesting. I was gonna make, ask if I could make a motion. Um, you know, clearly there's something needs to go to town meeting. There are, what, thirty five people here other than us? Um, I, you know, I I think, I don't know that there's agreement on what, but I think the planning board is the group that that does this kind of thing. And I, so if I were allowed to make a motion, it would be to refer this um to the planning board to get to work on it and present that to town meeting. Um, if I'm not allowed to make a motion, I'll go straw in favor of that, if you're taking your straw poll.
Okay, thank you. Malcolm?
Yeah, I mean, I I I'd like to uh vote my straw uh for uh continuing the process. So I don't know whether it's the right thing to do is begin with the registration. I think that would maybe a good first step, but I do think that we should discuss the uh what Lee has proposed and uh and uh and and see what we can do with it.
Are you suggesting as Ed does, it goes to the planning board for discussion?
Uh, I I think that's where, I I had assumed that this was a zoning bylaw. But um Lee's portion of it, the registration, probably not. But uh, I would think that that would be where we would uh, you know, discuss this as a as a zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, anybody else? Let's see. Lee?
Um, so thi- this, I had used the the town of Somerville, Massachusetts um as a template for this. And I believe that was a general ordinance that was passed. So I would like to get town council's um recommendation or advice, whether this is a general ordinance as written. Um.
Okay, thanks for that insight.
There is a motion, whether you wanna recognize or not, your choice.
Yes, Ed. Okay, yes, you made an official. I'm not used to you making motions, so, oh, sorry. No, is there a second to Ed's motion? What was the motion? The the motion was to continue the process by referring this to the planning board um for discussion as a zoning bylaw.
Well, so without knowing if it's a general ordinance or zoning, how can we do that?
I would actually say the opposite, which is until we know what it is, what it's gonna look like, we don't know if it's general or zoning.
Um, so we have a, we have a motion and a second, and we're having some discussion on it, right? So Chris, eh, what's the timeline if we were to ask town council for their advice as to whether or not this, if this is a zoning bylaw or a general ordinance?
It it will take some time. If you if you want the planning board to take it up regardless.
I think.
Maybe that should be the motion.
Yeah, it should be better as a parallel process, just because, Lee, we're gonna run out of time, given that it's almost December.
And that would be your first motion. That's the easy one. The second one is, what purposes are you trying to get at?
Yes.
Let's not forget that.
No, I won't. I have my list. So uh, we have a motion and a second to refer this ordinance to the um, to the planning board to take up. Um, do we have any further discussion on it?
Yes. Could I just get clarification from Chris that this will still be um referred to town council to at, you know, concurrently with with having the planning board look at it?
Yes. Yes.
Lee, did you hear that? Are you frozen?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Okay, okay. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, Ed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jonathan, how do you vote?
Maybe.
That's not one of the choices.
Uh, I'll vote okay, aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Garfield?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Brandy, aye. All right, great. We'll take that up.
So you've you've successfully given it to the planning board, Ed.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
That was the easy part, though, right?
Now some guidance for the planning board.
Right, so, so, um, so Lee has worked out purposes as provided in our packet, and she has read those to us and shared them on the record. And they are, I would say, generally in concordance with what the bulk of our discussion has been um this evening. Um, does anyone wanna make a motion um to uh pursue uh the focus of the bylaw consistent with the purposes provided in the in the draft bylaw?
Can I ask a question or should I wait for the motion?
No, please ask questions, cuz I'm, I'm like.
The last one talks about community cohesion in neighborhoods, and I just, I I don't know what kind.
What does that mean?
Right.
Yeah. Sure, that's a, that's a fair question. I mean, typically, we would use words for zoning bylaws more like community character. And we have lots of robust discussion about what community character means. So, um, we might change that language to be community character. Uh, but I think character is generally the language we're using with the zoning bylaws. So it's a consistency of development pattern, property usage. Um, sometimes it's a consistency of um an architectural pattern or something along those lines.
Yeah, um, but I I I think uh, my understanding of the community cohesion issue had to do with uh, maybe, and this goes back to Jeremy a little bit.
Maybe, and this goes back to Jeremy a little bit, uh, you know, is uh having neighbors. Uh, as opposed to strangers rolling through your neighborhood.
That's why I asked, because I would look at it as to say something that doesn't tear apart the community. Right? The community is not just made up of full-time residents, for example. So um, that's why I'm asking for, is that one of the things we're looking for, is something that doesn't divide us as a community?
You, you mean in terms of a spirited discussion at town meeting, or?
Well, that's always lovely, but uh, just an us versus them, which I, one of the things that concerns me about this. Is we, we're blind to that, but, you know, the people at town meeting who will vote are not directly impacted by this. It's the ones who can vote, who are still part of our community and pay taxes. That, you know, that's, my concern is, is part of that going to be some one of the things you're looking at?
Yeah, that's a good point. Cohesion is, is probably gonna be a, a, a difficult thing to pin down, cuz it's gonna mean different things to different people.
You know, one, one of the things that, um, and I'm not sure that it was on, on Lee's list. But one of the things that we have to uh keep in mind, and this has been on a lot of the correspondence we've received, is that. You know, tourism is an economic engine in our town. Now, it can be debatable whether Airbnb or short-term rental itself is an economic engine. But um, you know, we also have to consider, though, the uh impact of tourism. And consider whether short-term rental would have an adverse, you know, limiting short-term rental would have an adverse effect. Uh, I happen to think that it doesn't. And I think that we need to weigh that in terms of housing needs and other uh objectives, but I think that still has to be part of the discussion.
Well, and economic opportunity for homeowners.
And, and you two have abandoned the hand raising, so I wanna make sure Lee gets to have some feedback as well.
Uh, thanks, um, thank you. So uh, just looking at the, the purposes when I was drafting this. I was looking at the master plan, and I was looking at chapter one, our vision of the town we want. That kind of focuses on some of the things that were important to the master plan back when it was drafted. And it mentions protecting the special places and features that contribute to Great Barrington's distinctive character. And ensuring that development contributes to the viability and character of villages. And um. In addressing the, the nature of cohesion versus character. You know, when we ha- when, when we uh have our neighborhoods. And we, you know, know the people that are living next to us, and we see them in our shops. And they're part of our, you know, volunteer fire department, and they're in their schools. You know, it, it, it adds that character, it adds that cohesion. And that's what I was really trying to address. And it's not to say that we don't, we're trying to exclude uh second homeowners or tourists. But within residential neighborhoods, um, having that cohesion and knowing who your neighbors are. Um, is, is a really important and distinctive and special uh aspect about Great Barrington. So tha- that's what I was trying to address. Um, so, is there any questions? It was um, you know, looking at really the, the vision um that was laid out in the master plan. And trying to um, to answer some of those um, that, that, those tie-ins, so.
Got your hand up?
Yeah, you know, this discussion troubles me because it always teeters really close to this notion. That we've exhibited in the country and in the town for sure, for a better part of a hundred years. Of trying to control and shape uh the people that live around us. You know, these are notions that were codified by federal governments, codified by local governments. And they're the cause of a lot of the social and economic inequities that we live with today. So these kind of conversations, I'm really uneasy with, you know, and. And another thing that, that makes me a little uneasy in this entire conversation is um. The way that we're throwing around ideas of what we think uh are issues and are problems. For example, our neighborhoods, um, and problems with our neighborhoods, well. Nuisance problems, for example. A, a couple of weeks ago, on the, when we were discussing this on the housing committee, I called the police station. And they have close to none, no complaints. From this type of activity. This notion that investor, right, like the, the word investor, the way that it's used. We're, you know, I'm sorry, but people who, who are able to purchase a second home here. You know, why are we looking at them as evil people? This notion of strangers is, I mean, it's so troubling to me. You know, to bring up the word stranger, we heard this when we were discussing the housing. Project that was gonna go in the old retirement home on Main Street was incredible. People were actually saying that they didn't want strangers around them. And then the notion that short-term rentals and investors buying second homes and the rest of it inflate rental markets. And inflate housing markets. To me, all of this stuff is, is anecdote and innuendo. And I'll have a really hard time basing any kind of policy on those types of ideas. We'll have some.
Good to know? Wait, hold on, we gotta keep some semblance of order here. Steve, your hand is raised, and then Jeremy?
Yeah, I, I just wanna be clear.
Next, Malcolm.
I, I just wanna be very clear that second homeowners are part of the fabric of this community. And they're not strangers. They're here many, many, many months, some of them up to six months. And whenever I've talked about strangers, it has nothing to do with second homeowners. Because if that's what was inferred, I agree with Pedro, that's uh just stomach turning. They're not, they're not strangers. They're, they're part of this community. They participate in events in this community. They um, they are as much a part of this community as full-time residents.
Thank you. Jeremy, you're next.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wanted to uh say something about the strangers thing too. So, I mean, I've worked, um, or am working and have worked in um service for the last. I don't know what it is now, twenty years or whatever, twenty-five years. And, you know, and for the bulk of that, I worked all Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, all holidays. And so I saw a lot of um second homeowners, I saw a lot of repeat visitors. And hopefully, what we're getting is anyone that comes to our town, hopefully, they're coming back. And so, you know, the moment they come back, you know, they're, they're, you know, part of the fabric of our community. And e- even the first time, because we're hoping they're coming back. And, yeah, I mean, I, I, I totally. I, I, that whole stranger thing really upset me when it came up um with the project that Pedro's talking about. And um, yeah, I mean, I, I would see people, the same people over and over again. I would see people, you know, second homeowners coming in every weekend, and then, then it changed to every other weekend. And then it started, the spaces started to become further and farther between, but then they would always come back. And, you know, the, the point about, you know, what class of people do we want to be able to s- be second homeowners in this town? I mean, that, you know, that really hits home for me. And, you know, so if we just want rich people to be second homeowners, then, you know, this isn't such a big deal. Going forward with this. But if we want anyone else to be a second homeowner, then, yeah, it, it is a big deal. Because, you know, how are people gonna make it work? And, you know, I, I, I don't know, there's a lot. This part of the discussion that we're having, the purposes that we're listing out in this thing, I think it's, it's so broad. To try to come up with something on short-term housing that's gonna achieve all these goals. I just think it's just way too broad. And we should be, if we're gonna pursue this, it should be a very narrow course of purpose.
I like that suggestion. And, and I think with that, just in the interest of, like, I know everyone is very passionate about this topic. And we could go on and on. Might I suggest we take these one by one? Or possibly just focus on um a purpose that reduces adverse effects of short-term rentals? As it relates to traffic, noise, community cohesion, or reduce commercial operations in residential neighborhoods? You know, something that's more targeted than, um, Malcolm, you were the next person with your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I gotta say, I mean, I, you know, you're mischaracterizing my use of the word strangers. When I use the word strangers, I'm talking about the people at the end of my street who come in for a week and then leave. And then another group of strangers come in for a week and leave, not the second homeowners. And uh, I, I'm not penalizing, in fact, I don't think we should be penalizing second homeowners. Who wanna rent their house on a short-term rental. I'm talking about uh people who are not part-time residents, but people who buy as an investment. Who uh, purely an investment, who don't reside in the town at all. I'd like to see a, a, uh, Lee's bylaw allow second homeowners to uh do short-term rentals. To the extent that they reside in the home. I'd like to see uh, uh, the multiple homes by a resident's grandfather. So that we're not penalizing people who have invested in it. But I do think we need to address these things. And I, and, you know, Pedro, we're gonna have some discarded discussions. I think, I don't think it's, uh, I think it's science. I think it's the science of economics, the science of supply and demand that's driving this. And I don't believe it's just anecdotal in terms of what the impact of, of short-term rental is on, on uh property. Well, it, if you have numbers, I wish you'd share, because we don't have numbers for any of this stuff. Including the, the amount of investors that are u- they're turning around and, and, and short-term. You know, you renting their places in short-term as strictly an investment. Well, if you have numbers that uh counter the law of supply and demand, I'd like to see that as well.
I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna get anywhere with this.
And again, the, the economic issue here is not a, a, a supply and demand issue, it's a capital issue. We don't live in twentieth century economic times. We live in a fifty-year buildup of capital across the country. That has hap- is having an effect on our town. It's had an effect at least since September eleventh. But it's a capital buildup that's happened since the nineteen eighties that, you know, none of us are even thinking about. You know, we're going after like the, the low-hanging fruit here. You know, but we keep electing, you know, we keep electing officials that, that don't really address the core issue of all of our inequity. You know, our, our social and economic inequity.
Lee?
So in terms of the economic impact of short-term rentals. And the fact that there's a shortage of workers, and there's a shortage of teachers. And there's a shortage of essential workers in Great Barrington that can afford to live here, that have been priced out of this community. How do we address that?
That, that is a, that is a topic that is just so huge, like, they're not gonna solve that.
No, 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 but what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at this zero percent rental vacancy rate, the fact that there is, uh, you know, the supply shortage. So.
All agree.
And there's an immediate, so I'm just saying that, you know, that's one, one purpose of this is, is.
That's why we formed the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say. We were meeting next Wednesday, and this should be the topic of our meeting.
Yeah, but this, this is one way to address that. So I, I'm not saying, I'm saying this is, you know, to multifac- so.
I mean, I, I. It, so it's been referred to the, the planning board. What I need to be able to leave with are purposes. And I don't wanna talk about it for four hours, cuz I think we could, but I don't think we have to. Because we, we all know we want to create diverse housing opportunities in our community. And I, I think we all agree, everyone who comes to our community brings something to the community, right? So that's important. We don't wanna diminish that. But in terms of short-term rental, that now the planning board is gonna need to come up, uh, take up. I would like to be focused on the purpose. And so I would like, after Garfield says what he has to say, if we could pivot to purpose. And tease out the things we feel most strongly about. So that the planning board can take a more direct approach in um, working with this language. And working it into a zoning bylaw that we feel is going to be successful at town meeting. So Garfield, what do you have to say?
For whatever type of bylaw.
For whatever type of bylaw, thank you, yes, true.
Well, I have to say that I think, um, and I should be wrong with the interpretation, looking at Malcolm, it looks like. He's had a little bit much. I think we're really tense right now. I don't know if tonight is the night to go ahead with our suggestions. That's my thought. I think even it's a week from now, I think there's a lot of stuff, there's still some issues here that seem to be getting under everyone's craw. And I think we need to think about it at least one more week. That's my, that's my feeling. Long in the tooth right now, we might be losing a little bit of direction.
I think if we could focus on the purpose, that would be great. I'm concerned about delaying the discussion any further, and I was very grateful that everyone was willing to meet tonight on a fifth Monday. When none of us normally have any other obligations. Because when we look at getting things on the, the warrant for town meeting. December becomes a really critical month for working through um, language for um, town meeting warrant items. And so I, I, I feel like if we delay much farther, um, we don't have a good shot at, at getting something. That this group has worked on to uh, to town meeting for the main meeting. So I, I would like to suggest if we can maybe spend like fifteen minutes, we've got six purposes that are listed here. I'm gonna suggest that reducing commercial operations in residential neighborhoods might be one that everyone can be fairly supportive of.
Yeah, can we just go through them all one at a time and do the straw voting?
Sure. So the first one is ensure the primary use of rentals remains residential.
Kinda gotta do this by roll call, unfortunately, because.
We can't raise our hands.
Yeah, not in the meeting room.
Okay, hey, God, here, I gotta make.
Just ask if there's objection?
Okay, that's a good way to do it. Ed? Does anyone object to leaving in ensure the primary use of rental remains residential as a purpose? Hearing none? Um, does anyone object to reducing commercial operations in residential neighborhoods as a purpose?
I guess if we're defining commercial differently for um, a year-round resident versus a second homeowner. Then I'd have a question.
Where are you finding these, Brandy?
Um, they're on page eight of our packet, um, as part of the draft zoning ordinance. Um, in the first paragraph, seven point two zero point one, purpose. And I'm on the third line from the bottom.
I thought when we got the definition earlier, um, the current law, it is commercial if you're not a full-time resident.
Correct.
Right, so I'm, what I'm aiming to do is not differentiate and divide us that way as a community. That would be my objection to that. So if there were a different word. You know, if what we're against is uh, short-term rentals, let's say that. But if, if that's a code word for who gets to have short-term rentals, um, that doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't lead towards a, a, making neighborhoods neighborhoods.
So let, let's skip to the third one then, which is prevent long-term rental units from being replaced with short-term rentals.
Right.
Does anyone object to that remaining as a purpose? Okay, the next one is to protect affordable housing units from conversion.
I don't know how this does that.
I'm not sure either. I'd rather leave that one out, cuz I think that is a different issue altogether.
Well, you're not, you're not objecting to it.
Right, that, that's the question. We didn't ask if it does this or not, we're asking if you object that happening. Object to what happening?
Just object to the discussion.
Go ahead.
Um, so, so the question is, does anyone object to leaving in the stated purpose? Of protect affordable housing units from conversion as part of the short-term rental bylaw? And Jonathan, your, your statement was that you don't see how short-term rental bylaw protects affordable housing units from conversion? I'm, I'm inferring here.
I would object to that, because I don't think it does this. I mean, if you're gonna have purposes, then it's good to try to achieve those purposes.
Sure, no, understandable. Lee, did you have a different opinion?
I just wanted to clarify that, that that was addressing um particularly the use of um taking multi-families off the market. And, and converting them to short-term rentals. So there are in- instances um that affordable housing units are um. Are being taken off the, the market and converting to short-term rentals. Are being taken off the the market and converting to short term rentals. Um there's also kind of a cascading effect uh with the inflated properties. Uh inflated prices that short term rentals cause um in terms of the amount of affordable housing units there are. So there there is a correlation between affordable housing and the conversion um of short term rentals, so.
But if we're preventing long term rentals from being replaced with short term rentals, is that not implicit? Is protection.
Yeah, 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 I I I agree, yeah, I I was losing that second part of that, that part of that, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, I think we can keep that intent in mind, um so then the next one, does anyone object to leaving in. Reduce the adverse effects of short term rentals on traffic noise and community cohesion in neighborhoods.
I I think it's not demonstrated.
Yeah, I am wondering. Yeah, I wonder about, I have a little bit of a problem with that because of what it infers elsewhere.
What if it was reduce the adverse effects of short term rentals on traffic and nuisance issues?
I would take out traffic, I don't think it's an issue.
Reduce the adverse effect of short term rentals, the um adverse effect of short term rentals. Maybe it's just the adverse effect of short term rentals on neighborhoods.
On on characters of neighborhoods with.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that either. I liked, when you went directly to nuisance, I thought that was better.
Instead of adverse effects, reduce nuisance impacts of short term rentals. Well, we we don't know.
We don't have any demonstrated.
I I know, I know, I'm just.
I I like that because it's very distinct, when you open it up to character, it's like, you know, then we can start. It's everything.
I know, we have lots of discussion on character.
We use, we use character too much to stop anything from happening. And I, yeah, I I I want us to be much more specific when we're trying to get at character. And so the nuisance thing for this, I think is great, even if we haven't defined what the nuisances are.
How does everybody feel about that? Go ahead, Lee.
Uh Steve, did you had a a a note about? No, I mean, I just, one of the um. Some of the feedback that I've I've gotten about short term rentals is that it does affect neighborhoods and and. Uh the feeling of cohesion, so that that could be the wrong choice of words, or it's a wrong choice of word. Um but I think to address the fact that. So something about the the adverse effects of neighborhoods and I I guess, you know, I'm getting tired, I don't really, I can't think of the right word, but I think that there is an issue.
Well, we could add additional purpose, right? I mean, I think our goal is to get started with something that we feel like we can get our hands around and so. If right now we say, um you know, the purpose is to ensure the primary use of rentals remains residential. To prevent long term rentals from being replaced with short term rentals. And to reduce nuisance impacts of short term rentals on neighborhoods. I think that's a good, like tangible place to start. Does that sound good to everybody? Ed's nodding, yes, does anyone object to the that? Hearing none, those will be the three things we'll focus on, Kim, did you get those? I I marked up my uh copy of the short term rental while we were talking here, so.
Do we need to vote on a final version so that it's been voted on?
Think we do, I think we take it as guidance, but if it would make everyone feel better, um Chris is nodding, we do or we don't, Chris? We don't, okay, okay, so no, I I think we'll, the planning board will go with this and then.
What'll happen is when the planning board changes the purposes even slightly. It was almost like they'd have to come back to this joint committee and that's not what we wanna do.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I I feel like this has been such a um. A group effort to this point that we should probably just report out to you after each meeting. Um I don't wanna create work for Chris, so I'll have to help him with that, but.
I'll just send them the recording. Thank goodness for Zoom, are there other, are there other purposes? I mean, we've used Lee's proposal as a, as a good starting point, there may be other purposes. The select board may take up the impact fee separately.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, the fiscal impacts, um the fiscal impacts.
I I would, I would say uh health and safety is a major issue that's not addressed here.
I think that's a really fair point, Jonathan, that should be addressed. So if we add to um. Let's see, how how would we say that, um?
Health and safety, that's good enough for guidance, I think.
Maintain life safety or address issues of life safety.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
Well, um one of Chris's possible ones was set certain standards which short term rentals must comply, I think that's the same thing. Where it is. I assume that's health and safety, okay.
Health and safety is more sellable.
Okay, so that's four purposes. Is everybody, if everybody, if no one objects to that, then I will say that we've concluded our discussion on this. Part of the agenda.
So we will, Brandon, if you allow me to, we'll go. Speak.
That sounds great.
And we will allow three minutes for each person with their hands up, there's some people who's had their hands up for a while. I'll just go in the order that I, there are five right now, so. I'll start with uh Teresa Segala, state your name and address and um go ahead. Just unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, my name is Teresa Segala, I'm on uh Milvera Great Barrington Road in New Marlborough. Um thank you for giving me time to speak. My husband and I own multiple units in Great Barrington, we've been Berkshire residents, my husband for his whole life, me for over thirty years. We raised our kids here, we took care of our our parents, our neighbors, our friends. And now I'm watching this happen and I just wanna ask the committee. Have you gone around and driven around and passed by the houses that people have renovated and turned into Airbnbs?
This is your chance to to talk to us, not to ask questions.
Okay, well, that's one of my, that's one of my wondering questions that I have, but um the other thing I I wanna ask is. Well, I'd like to say, I hope, I hope that there isn't going to be a committee that's going to be telling these people. How much they can charge for long term rentals, once they decide to stop doing short term. Or vice versa, because we have long term rentals right now in Great Barrington, we do not have any Airbnbs. So this is where I think it's important to state, with our long term rentals, we have tenants that have been there for well over ten years. We take very good care of our tenants. We are, right now, currently, we have one rental that has been sitting empty for a year. It's sitting empty because we were abused by short term, well, not short term, long term rentals. The tenant did not uh uh respect the property. It was held to get them to move out. And just the shell shock alone from having to deal with that, I think is what's pushing these. These owners to go to short term rentals, because they figure if people come in, they rent for a month, they rent for two weeks. They gotta go back to their license and their jobs, so they're not going to have the stress. I I understand that that the committee is concerned that there are not enough long term rentals. Not enough housing in Berkshire County, however, this has already begun. People are already renting it, they've been doing it for over two years, they bought properties, they came in, I'm not happy with seeing a lot of. As you guys called it, strangers on the street, but the more you get to know somebody in the store and you talk to them. It sometimes turns into a breath of fresh air when you start learning how the people became residents here. And then they loved it so much, they stayed and then they bought a second home and they. They had their families, they sent them off to college, kids come back. We've been through this scenario multiple times, I, all three of our children have grown up, moved away, came back. I just wanted, I just wanted to let you know that as a long term rental landlord. We we embrace the people that that started Airbnbs because they made the properties next to our properties beautiful. We didn't have to worry anymore when someone came to look at a house, whether we were gonna show it dusk, so that they didn't see the mess in the backyard. Or all the cars sitting out and the noise from other kids, we, I'm just trying to understand here. Why the committee feels that this is going to make too much of a change when the rents are gonna stay high because the cost of living is so high.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just so everyone knows, I'm keeping right to the three minutes cuz we have a number of people wanna speak. So I would ask you not to repeat yourself and to um to keep it three or under, please. Uh Laura Nopler.
Hi, good evening, everyone, uh Laura Nopler, Prospect Street in Housatonic. First of all, thank you to all the fellow weavers of the fabric of community. Thank you for looking out for your neighbors. Up twenty years ago or so, we, the Affordable Berkshire. Uh Housing Committee, Southern Berkshire Affordable Housing Committee, sponsored the first Affordable Housing Forum. And it was held in a congregational church on Main Street. Hearing what everybody's talking about tonight and um knowing the reality of our housing shortage. Uh back twenty years ago, um and the title of that forum, by the way, was Housing Our Communities. Can we afford not to? And here we are, twenty years later, and the situation is as dire as it ever was. Um yes, there've been a number of affordable units built in town, but it's really very obvious. Uh from all the uh uh help wanted signs in our stores to this zero vacancy rental rate, we've got a huge problem. I am of the firm belief that a community is strong when it's diverse, when it's diverse, when it can house. Teachers, postal workers, um uh as well as uh people who are working remotely from home. Um wherever their main office is, um thank you for looking into this issue. Um I wanna share a story that I heard the other night Thanksgiving about a community in Litchfield County. About an investor who came from out of town and bought up more than a hundred units. Um and he was described in buying up these units, he's an investor, he doesn't live in the town in Litchfield County. As being like a kid in in a candy shop. I think we have to think about what is our vision of our community moving forward. Um how do we wanna support it so that uh regular people, uh not just people of means can. Uh afford to live here and participate and contribute all the valuable things that. People of a diverse community uh contribute and make uh the fabric of a community stronger. I like the idea of a registration process, uh I think we have so much to get a handle on in terms of how many. Short term rentals we do have, uh I can tell you that the Shopper's Guide, twenty years ago, the number of. Vacant apartment rentals and housing rentals, there were multiple pages of listings. And then when Airbnb came in in two thousand eight, one has watched steadily as the years have gone by. Watched the number of uh rentals advertised in the Shopper's Guide uh decrease, yes, you can ca- call this anecdotal evidence. But I think, well, we all know, well, we've got a tremendous problem and I really hope that we put this question out at town meeting. About how we can do this regulation um so that we don't have people coming from outside who don't live here. Um buying up uh properties and making them short term rentals and just further contributing to this terrible. Housing shortage that we have.
Thank you. Dan Ruderman.
Hi, thank you for giving me a chance to speak and I wanna thank everybody on the joint committee for all the work you're doing on. A really challenging problem. Uh my name is Dan Ruderman, I live at Four Knob Hill Road in Great Barrington. I'm a homeowner and I actually have uh an area in my basement that I could use as an Airbnb. Uh but instead I just use for friends who need temporary housing or visiting, um I could use it as an Airbnb cuz it doesn't have a full kitchen. I think that is what some of those people are seeking, I did wanna thank the committee for the work you're doing, it's hard, I don't think that there's any um bad guys or villains. And I also don't think that if we go looking for the data that tells us what's wrong, we're gonna find it cuz that would just be lagging indicators of problems. And we all see what the leading indicator is, and I think the billboard on Main Street. Across from Plaza Package was a big wake up call to everybody, there are clearly out of town investors that are looking to attract. Uh people who wanna turn their second homes into better income properties. The analogy that might be good here is the difference between a chop shop and a and a car dealership. I think most of us know if you take a car and you break it out into the pieces, it's worth a whole lot more than the new car. And in a way, if we continue to let short term rentals go unabated and unregulated, that's what we're facing. Anybody with a property is gonna realize, as Chris pointed out, that six nights of an Airbnb rental rate is better than a month of a long term rental rate. Um so that that that's the capital incentive for people to do it and there's nothing wrong with. Saying that we want to be leaders in our town, we wanna encourage everybody in our town, wanna encourage people to come and visit. But we do wanna stop it from getting out of hand and vacation towns all over the country have done that. I also think it's great in the discussions that we're keeping it limited to scope and I applaud you for the ways that you've limited to what you're trying to solve. Clearly, there's a labor and a housing shortage in the area, uh and I think you've addressed that well, so I just wanted to thank you for all that. Um is there more investments when people have short term rentals, there's investments in the properties like there are any other time? Um will it bring in more people to events and things like that, I don't think so, I think the argument that a rising tide lifts all boats. Isn't the one here, I think the problem that we have is that a tsunami of short term rentals drowns everyone. So I'd like to see uh continue this committee's work and I'm looking forward to what the planning committee comes back with, and I wanna thank you for listening to citizens.
Thank you very much. Tim Newman.
Good evening, I'm Tim Newman, I live in Norfolk Road in Southfield, I've been interested in. Great Barrington economic development issues for a long time. Uh I generally salute what you're doing, I think the spirit of what Lee is proposing is excellent. There's a lot of details, I might sure be with all of them, I do think it's very important that you continue with what you're doing. My concern is that you're sort of putting the entire load. On a solution which I don't think is sufficiently robust to solve the problem. And my question is, or suggestion, are there any other tools that the town has? That can be brought to bear on the housing problem? You know, many resort communities across the country have one way or another invested in workforce housing. This is true in Antucket and Aspen and other resort communities, I don't know about other ones, but I I worry. I don't have the solution or a suggestion, but I'm worried that that uh you you'll you'll feel. Uh disappointed at uh your best efforts to clear enough housing. To make it worthwhile, so I would encourage you to, if you can. Explore other tools to add to what you're already doing. Uh the only other thing I would say is I I'm quite sympathetic with what several people have said about this idea of. Of of them and us, you know, uh the outsiders, I think we'd be really careful about that. You know, I was an outsider eighteen years ago. Uh you know, we're a nation of immigrants and all those corny things, but I think it's very dangerous when you start talking about them and us. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Tim. Barbara Motts. Did I miss Barbara, hold on. Sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
Hi, um good evening, it's Barbara Motts, twenty two Mahavee Street, Great Barrington. First of all, I wanna thank you all for your really meticulous work in this and um I just. Would like to agree with several of you who said, this is not a problem for today, it's really, to me, a long term problem because. Short term housing is something that I think is gonna be growing and I think we need to um keep that in perspective. Um I'm just a little bit confused about how um speaking about neighborhood co- in speaking about neighborhood cohesion. The term stranger became equated with something evil and as somebody just said, it's us versus them. I don't see it as us versus them, I don't see um my, any short term renters in my area. Potentially as evil, I just think that there are people that I can't form a relationship with and I. And I think that forming relationships is very important to me in my neighborhood. Um it it provides stability to my neighborhood, um and it's. Um, it, it provides stability to my neighborhood, um, and it's, I think that that's, I, I just don't get it, why, why it's become something evil? I, I don't see it that way. I would like to have a relationship with my neighbors where I can ha- have holidays with them and have coffee with them and, and we have, we can have long-term, we can have discussions on, on long-term goals and for the town and just, just, again, stability, stability, and, um, I, I don't think it's an issue of us versus them, I, I don't see them as evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. M. Peretti?
Hi, I'm, it's Julie Peretti. Um, I've lived in the town my whole life.
Address, please, Julie.
Oh, one twenty-five Seekonk Crossroad.
Thank you.
My husband and I have lived in town our whole lives, we've seen many changes over our years of living here. Um, we do have an Airbnb, we have two units, and one is rented to a longtime tenant that we have, um, and we've kept her, um, rent very affordable. And then our Airbnb has provided us with, um, stability that we would not have had living in the town, um, with the taxes the way they are. Uh, we have two children that we've sent to school here, we've sent them to college, and we were able to do that because of the Airbnb. Um, I haven't heard anybody mention that somebody who has an apartment or provides an apartment for somebody who works in town, like we do, um, maybe a discount in taxes. Um, you know, that could be a solution, that, you know, maybe there is something that you can do if you do have a rental property that you, you know, you provide housing for a worker in town, that you may be able to get a tax break. Um, so I just, you know, th- there's, there's a lot of issues here, there's a lot of hot point issues for me. Um, you know, I, we've had three hundred guests, they've been nothing but wonderful. They've treated my space with respect, they go into town, they ask me for suggestions, they shop at the farmer's market, they mentioned Berkshire Busk in, you know, several of their reviews, they, you know, I mean, I just can't tell you like what the benefits are for them coming in. Um, and, you know, and like I said, I have one unit that I rent to, you know, she's been there eight, nine years now, and she embraces my Airbnb people, she's helped me out. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I just, you know, I just think that maybe there's a solution to, you know, you know, maybe a tax incentive of some sort or some sort of incentive to have somebody have a rental unit. Um, you know, so maybe that's a suggestion that could be kicked around, you know, uh, I, you know, just an offer of something from the town to try to keep people, you know, having an apartment. So, um, for workfor- for workforce, workforce in our town. So, um, I feel like we do have, I mean, I know we probably need more, but we, you know, I think Great Barrington has done a really great job in providing affordable housing. Um, are they all working in Great Barrington? I'm not sure. Um, you know, maybe, you know, the hill towns, they're not, you know, New Marbrows and Monterey's, the, you know, Sandisfields, like, you know, I, I don't know if they provide housing for people like, you know, low income or even work housing, because work housing means you do have transportation, I mean, you can't always do a transportation situation where, oh, there's no transportation there. You know, if you're working, more than likely you have a car, so maybe some of the outer skirt towns can, you know, help out with housing as well, not just always Great Barrington.
Uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Leo Stemp? Just unmute yourself.
Uh, how about now, is that working?
Yes.
Yes.
So Leo Stemp, uh, on Herbal, Herbal Road in Great Barrington. So, we, we built a second home there to use as a vacation home. Um, we put three times into that home the amount that we spend on the home we live in all year round. I would venture to say that many of these homes are very nice properties, and, you know, someone's talk- someone talking, talked about the fact, you know, about the maintenance of these properties. By and large, I would suggest to you that these homes are very well-maintained properties and contribute to the value of the neighborhood. You know, I think that what you're trying to do is a very, very laudable goal, obvious, I don't, obviously, I don't have to say that. I'm just dismayed by the way that you're going about doing it. I haven't heard any rigorous analysis whatsoever, I haven't heard any analysis about the economic impact from the standpoint of the tax base, the economic impact on the revenue group of the local establishments. Um, you know, and then, then I hear people talking about reducing the effect on traffic cohesion and noise in neighborhoods. Do you have any data on that? It's, it's just, I'm, I'm shocked that this is government policy and you're going about, about it just as if you're hearing from people. I, I don't understand, I don't understand the, the logic behind that, although granted, again, a very laudable goal here. Um, and when you talk about the nuisance factor, the, many of these homes are beautiful homes and contribute greatly to the neighborhood, I, I just don't know where this is all coming from. You know, I think I would suggest to you, the next time you meet, you try to present some data to, to the people who are listening on, on the Zoom meeting, and that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Um, Mass? Just unmute yourself. Give you your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this is Massimo Manjardo. Um, I'm, I'm just calling in to share my experience.
Your address, too, please.
Oh, fifty-four River Street, it was the address that my mom lived at. Um, fifty-four River Street, Great Barrington, Massachusetts. Uh, anyway, this is just my experience and to share with you guys what happened there. My mom and everyone else in that building lived there for several years, and they always paid their rent. Um, the building was sold about two years ago to someone who I don't know, but they decided to sell it a few years later, um, they didn't manage to make any of the repairs that there were, that were promised in the sale. Um, and the person they sold it to decided to kick everybody out with thirty days' notice, uh, with a sheriff's notice. Um, the whole process was extremely stressful. Um, when the tenants said that they didn't wanna leave, the buyer referred to them as losers who didn't have their shit together. Um, my mom was lucky enough to find a place very last minute, uh, just two weeks ago, really. Um, and I had to fly up from Florida to help remove. Um, and, uh, you know, three out of the five people living in the building were, were, uh, in their fifties and up, one woman was over seventy, and she has nowhere to go, so. Uh, you know, I, I know we're talking about short-term housing, I don't know what is gonna be done with this property, it's definitely not gonna be a four-family home, and I think what, what, uh, I believe his name is Garfield said earlier, like, you have to think about what's happening to, to actual people, because you can't just crunch numbers and look at data and, and it, you have to understand that there is people who are having horrible experiences right now because of this, and it's, maybe you think it's not a big deal to move to Pittsfield, forty-five minutes to an hour from your job, but I think Lee had mentioned that you, you lose those people, like, and there's a job shortage in, there's a work shortage in Great Barrington, like, you walk around the streets and people don't work in the cafes, they're closed because they can't find anybody to work. And it's, uh, it's weird to go home, like, there is traffic, there is way more traffic. Like, i- it, I, you know, i- it's frustrating, I, I was, I have never been pushed in this way as far as stress, like, to, to try and find my mother a home, uh, and, and try and figure out how I could fund something and get her a house or whatever, it, it just, it's a bonkers experience right now, and it's, and you're, I know that there aren't any specific villains or anything, but if you hear people saying like, these people, these strangers, da-da-da, it's because they're having bad experiences, and you need to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gabrielle Sensa?
Hi, thank you, Gabrielle Sensa, I have my studio on Railroad Street, and I've lived in Great Barrington for many, many, many years. First, I have a, um, a statement from Kathleen Jackson from fifty-four Railroad Street, she couldn't be here tonight.
She, she can send me that in, but we don't allow us people to speak for other people. So, if she emails that to all of us, or if email to me and I'll send it to everyone and post it on the website.
Uh, okay, I will see if that's, that's cool. Um, okay, too bad about that. So, I really applaud this work that you're all doing, it is not an easy situation. Uh, I agree with so many things that you've said, second homeowners are, are really crucial to our economy here, and so that, I'm not talking about strangers, I actually love being an Airbnb guest, I've loved being an Airbnb host. What I am concerned about is what Massimo was just talking about. I'm sorry, it's very emotional, like, people are losing their homes. People we know, everybody here on the screen knows some of these people that have been evicted from their homes with thirty days' notice right before the holidays, and, and that is so upsetting. Like, the reality of that, how traumatic that is, why do these stories come through second, third, fourth hand? Because why aren't those people on this call tonight? Guess why? It's traumatic, it's traumatizing to be asked to have a sheriff show up at your house and hand you an eviction notice. I don't know if anyone here has had that experience, but I can tell you, it's really traumatizing. And it's like asking a rape victim to come and say, this is why this happened, or this is how this happened. Are you sensitive enough to hear the victims of the ta- the, of the people that are being thrown out of their homes? So, this is a really big, important issue, and as I've mentioned on other calls with you all, that, yes, there are cities all over the country and all over the world that have been really severely impacted, just like Massimo just spoke of, people losing their homes, they were paying rent for years. And then all of a sudden, uh, someone turns around and they're like, okay, you're out. Why? Because we can get better rents. So, could you at least, please, consider putting into place immediately some kind of moratorium on these thirty-day eviction notices to tenants, it's only fair to say, I respect that you've been here ten years, six years, whatever, we wanna give you some time to find a place. Um, yes, people have said that, yes, we need workforce housing, let's come up with some really good strategies for that. And let's, let's really remember the, the humans, the lives that are being impacted here. Gentrification displaces loads of people, we've seen it in our cities all over the world, all over the country. So we don't, I don't think we want that for Great Barrington, I'm pretty sure none of you on these boards want that for Great Barrington. You don't want to continue, we don't want to, I don't want to continue seeing my friends, neighbors, and families who've been here for thirty years or more, moving out of town and going to Greenfield or wherever because they can't afford to live in their hometowns.
Thank you very much. Lucas?
Hey, everyone, thanks for, uh, all your time here, I can see that, you know, a lot of, uh, work and, and effort has gone into all this, um, so my name's-
Name and address, please.
Yep, my name's Lucas, I own a property at eighteen Castle Hill Lane.
I need your last name for the record.
Merchant.
Thank you.
Uh, so I, uh, am also the owner of Berkshire Vacation Rental Management. Um, we are the company that, uh, has the billboard up on, uh, Main Street that people keep bringing up. I just wanna provide a little bit of insight into that, so it's myself and my business partner, um, we're a small company based in Boston. Uh, my business partner and I both own properties in Great Barrington that we use as vacation rentals, and, um, when we're not using them, we're in Great Barrington, I, you know, I consider myself, um, you know, part of the community of Great Barrington. Um, I'm there frequently, my family uses the house frequently, um, and, you know, I think this bill is very restrictive to that. Um, I also wanted to, you know, also bring up, we manage about forty homes total in the Berkshires, um, about three or four of those are in Great Barrington. So, you know, the point, uh, of the, the billboard being, uh, you know, a major sign to the times, I think is irrelevant. Um, I also can speak to, uh, you, you know, every single one of our clients are people who live in, you know, a, a major city and who like to spend weekends, uh, or, you know, up to a month in the Berkshires. And when they're not there, they need to be able to monetize their home. Um, you know, there's nothing illegal about that, and it's not a new thing, people have been doing this for, you know, as long as second home markets have existed. Um, so I just wanted to quickly point that out. Um, I also am really impressed with everybody's ability to, uh, sort of call out the points and the lack of statistics and data that, um, y- you know, are, are being brought up as it relates to the problems of short-term rentals. To me, it seems like there's no clear data to support any of the claims that are, um, you know, being put forth and, and what Lee's bill is designed to address. Um, so I, I really, uh, you know, I, I appreciate everybody's ability to kind of, um, you know, point out those issues. Um, the final point I wanna make, I live in Boston, um, to compare Great Barrington to Somerville is, I, I also think, uh, kind of irrelevant, Somerville is, uh, part of one of the top ten metropolitan areas in the United States of America. Um, so the, the housing problems that they're seeing in Somerville are very different than, uh, I, I think a town like Great Barrington. Um, so, you know, those are my points, and I appreciate you all taking the time. And, um, again, I've been really impressed with the, the panel's ability to, uh, sort of think about this objectively and, um, you know, try to bring more statistics and hard data into the equation, because ultimately there are a lot of people who own second homes that are absolutely a part of the community in Great Barrington, um, but need to offset the cost of their home by doing short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Nan Wile?
Yes, I need to un- unmute myself, okay, so, I, I-
Name and address, please.
Nan Wile, and I'm on Main Street, Great Barrington. My, uh, I'm going to reiterate what I did at the last meeting, which is, let us get back away from the numbers and the statistics and the data, and remember that these people who are being evicted are your neighbors, and the people that voted you guys into office, so that you would take care of our greater needs, that you would be looking out for our benefit. And I want to point out that there are several existing multi-unit properties that have been repurposed for conversion into short-term rentals that benefit, uh, people who live or don't live here, but in any event, they are taking away homes of people that have actually um, invested in the community and are a part of the fabric of our community, and are a part of what makes our community an intimate place to live. And, uh, yeah, I mean, I've, nothing against second homeowners. I kind of don't like that they're only part-time because there is such a dearth of uh, rental property for the people who live and work here and have brought up their children. But, um, uh, no, strangers is not about strangers, and I think, thank you very much, Malcolm, and whoever else it was that, um, that deferred to the fact that their ter- using the term stranger was mis- a misrepresentation, and they did no, in no way mean to malign people who are here, who don't live here year-round. Uh, relationships with neighbors, um, s- very important, it's part of the, the, as I say, the intimacy of the neighborhood, and I have already sent you letters from people who are neighborhood dwellers who have seen properties next door convert into multi-unit dwellings, and yes, there's more traffic. Um, and they feel less, less at home as they walk the streets of their, their, um, their hood. So anyway, go back, my main point, as I say, is, let's get human about this. Let's remember that the people that are being evicted are people that you might have grown up with or you know, uh, intimately. And let's take care of them, let's set up very reasonable regulations, nothing that's, that's draconian, but reasonable, uh, that prevents people from being kicked out of their homes and, uh, S T R, S T R, um, properties, uh, totally getting out of hand in terms of their numbers, that's it.
Thank you, Dan. Hi, Lee Moni? Eileen Mooney? Mark, which net phone number is Eileen's?
Eileen, you there? You should be able to speak. You're unmuted, Eileen.
Yeah, I think I have to actually let her phone.
Oh, I believe she's the one that ends in one hundred?
Okay, that's what I thought also, okay. Go ahead, Eileen, just unmute your phone. Press star six, you know that.
Okay, all right. It took five times, according to my telephone. I did not mean to raise my hand.
Ron Blumenthal, I believe that's who it is?
Um, yes, that's me. Uh, Ron Blumenthal, um, East Street in Great Barrington. Um, thank you for, um, all of this work that you're doing. I think the smart thing to do here is to pivot. Um, and what I want to pivot to is, um, how to address the zero percent vacancy rate. Um, there's been a zero percent vacancy rate here for twenty years. Um, someone said there was a having, housing shortage twenty years ago, and there's been no change since then. I've been renting houses here, uh, as a, uh, I hate to use this term, but I'll use it, as a landlord for twenty years. I have never had a vacancy. Um, so nothing has changed here, and, um, I don't do Airbnb here, as I've said to you guys, um, in writing, but I don't want to be constrained from doing so would I choose to do that. But the main thing is, there's not enough housing. So how, how do you get more housing here? You guys are the planning board. Um, there is a lot of municipal money available to set up, uh, industrial revenue bonds for people to do renovation or to build new housing. It's available extremely low, um, rate. I've done it in other places, and, and I'm not too smart, and so you guys can get it done. Um, if you need more capital, municipal bond fund for, um, renovators and, and developers, that's planning. That's a long-term strategy. To just look at the pie and try to cut it up differently, no, make more pie. Do more planning, um, set up some kind of agency, uh, public-private partnership. It's been done in lots of places. Make more housing. Uh, as I've said to you in, in writing, uh, every unit of housing that I own, and I don't know how to do it for less, two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. The biggest cost is financing. If you lower the financing, you'll get lower-cost housing, and it's a win for everyone. It's a win for the town, and it's a win for the tenants, and it's a winner for the people who do it. That's all I have to say. Um, please get going on that instead of circling around short-term rentals, because it's not gonna make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, last is Justin Henderson.
Hello, Justin Henderson, one four five Herbal Road?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanna, I'm sorry to be repetitious. I just wanted to say that I, I just don't, I don't think there's any way objectively that restricting short-term rentals in this fashion impacts positively long-term affordable housing. The key being affordable. Um, to limit, uh, short-term rentals to only pres- uh, primary residents renting their primary resident will effectively eviscerate the short-term rental market for, for residential properties. You're, you're gonna be left with the two or three hotels and official codified B and Bs, which isn't much. That will have an economic impact, and it will be severely negative. There will be more shops closed, less work for people. The problems a- at the heart of the spirit of this bill are not gonna get any better. In fact, it could be worse. If, if my property is all of a sudden restricted from being rented in short-term fashion, we'll probably sell it, and it will sell for well over two million bucks, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna help long-term affordable housing. It's probably gonna make it worse. It's gonna drive up the comps in the area. And who's gonna come by it? Affluent New Yorkers and Bostonites are gonna come by it, and they're gonna spend less time in Great Barrington than any short-term occupancy would, would, would heal. Um, so the, the combination of the lack of data, the stipulation that there's a nuisance, when I heard during the meeting that there's essentially no nuisance complaints, yet we're still talking about nuisance. So I, I feel like we're, we're, I, I'm very sympathetic to the human component here and the emotions around getting evicted and all that, but this, this isn't about saving people from being evicted. That's not gonna have any, this won't have any effect on that. This is, this is about limiting people's use rights to the properties that they've paid for. Comparing this to an investor in some random town that came in and bought a hundred properties is asinine. So, I mean, I hate to, to remark directly against some of the citizens, uh, responding here, but we're, we're not, we're not in the data. We're so far from the data, all we're talking about is emotion conjecture and anecdotes. We, I haven't heard one time, I've joined every one of these meetings, I haven't heard one time what the number is on the tax dollars that are being brought in right now. Because expect that to go to asymptotic to zero very fast. Because the, you're right now collecting, what, six percent of all these rents? It's probably a large annual dollar figure. Um, and how's the town gonna recoup that? Are you gonna let police officers go? You gonna let more teachers go from impacted school classes already? I mean, this is just a big departure from, from the goal, and I think the impact of this is gonna be so woefully uh, ineffectual that it will be repealed if it ever gets passed, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. There is one more person with their hand up, so I will allow him to, Johnny, to state your name and address.
Hi, my name is John Londoner. I'm at Nine Francis Avenue in Great Barrington. And I just want to suggest to the committee to really reach out to the local businesses, also to the short-term rental owners and the police department to address this quote nuisance unquote problem. Um, I also want to dispense with this ridiculous notion that short-term rental owners are less attentive or less accountable for their property. I don't think anything could be farther from truth. Um, I'd also like to dispense with the idea that short-term rental owners don't care to protect and maintain the residential character of, of, of the existing neighborhoods. I'll give you a quick anecdote, and then I'll, you know, let the meeting conclude itself. Uh, my next-door neighbor, uh, her mother passed away a couple of, like, a week and a half ago. She reached out to me to see if my place was available so that she can have rel- relatives stay there. I said, it is available, and of course I will not charge you. I'm happy to help out in your time of grief. And she was very appreciative of it. Uh, I have great relationships with my neighbors. Andrea, Margaret, Chris, Jason, Peter, Melody, George, Dave. Um, and you can feel free to ask them. Ed, you live just up the block from me. Uh, you know the, the property on, uh, the corner of Francis and Pleasant. And I think I've, I've, I've done a pretty good job at renovating it, and I've done a, a, a good service in, in bringing tourists and their money into the neighborhood. So I'll just conclude with that, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, media time. Saying, saying none, unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.